Okay, good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation by Rabbi Ovedia Goldman of Habad Community Center for Jewish Life and Learning, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Amelia Owens of Girl Scouts Troop 3469. Please stand.
Thank you very much, Mayor Holt, for asking me to offer the invocation this morning at the first of your second term at the meeting. I want to thank the entire City Council for your leadership throughout COVID and beyond, especially for being dedicated to life and the preservation of life, sparing almost no efforts to keep all of us here in Oklahoma City safe, healthy, and of course, moving onward. Let's pray. Almighty God, one of the things this pandemic has brought to the forefront is the inherent and equal importance of every individual. In Genesis, at the very beginning, the Torah, the Bible teaches that you, God, created the world. All other species were created in multiples, some by hundreds and even thousands, but for the human, we were created singularly, teaching us that every person is like an entire world. As the global spiritual leader of the Lubavitcherebi Rabbi Menachem M. Schnerson of Saintly Memory, whose recent 120th birthday this council marked, once explained that within each individual stands the entirety of the community, because the community is only complete when it's constituted by all its individuals, each with their own unique qualities, abilities, and contributions. I pray these words today as so much tugs at us, almost beckoning us apart, attempting to separate us by race, religion, politics, and creed. Oh Lord, there are actors who would use just about anything to try and sow the seeds of discord and disunity. I for one do not envy our mayor's and council members' responsibilities at this time. I pray, Father in heaven, that the aforementioned biblical foundation and principle founded at the dawn of humanity inspire our newly re-elected Mayor Holt and all of our city leaders today and for all time to spare no effort and continue to work tirelessly in the godly spirit of finding all that unites us, all that we share in common, nourishing and tending to each individual as they lead our city as a whole. And in the spirit of the founders of our nation wonderfully enshrined in our Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their created with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Father in heaven, may our great city serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths, color, and walks of life, and help achieve the goals so powerfully stated in our Pledge of Allegiance, that America truly be one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear God, you promise Midah Kneeged Midah to mirror our efforts and the measure of our work. So please, I pray that in turn, mirroring our efforts, Almighty God, you shall continue to shine your countenance upon our city, state, and country, still the greatest in the world, and bless us all indiscriminate of our finiteness and even our shortcomings and challenges. As our mayor and city council proceed today to act on all of our behalf, may you bless them and their families with health, life, and prosperity. May you bless all of our first responders, the men and the women that serve in our police department, in our fire department, in our ambulance corps, bless them with wisdom, strength, compassion, and success in enacting godly, just, and righteous laws to serve the best interests of all citizens of our great city. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Rabbi, and thank you, Amelia. Good job. I call this meeting of the City Council to order. Today is focused on the budget, and this will include the introduction of the city manager's budget proposal and some presentations that will continue in the weeks ahead. And we do have one item to vote on today, but that will be it. This meeting will mostly be presentations. We have nothing under Office of the Mayor, and so we will proceed to Item 4, which is items requiring separate votes. That is Item A. This is a resolution setting City Council public hearing dates of May 17th and May 31st for budget-related presentations and public comment on the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2023, and setting June 7th as the formal City Council public hearing on the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2023, at which time the City Council will consider and discuss the proposed budget and may adopt the budget as proposed or amend it, reject it, or defer it to a later hearing date, and directing appropriate publication. I don't know that this requires, the title pretty much, I think, covers the resolution's meaning, and so I think we could probably go ahead and take a motion on that unless there's any comment, and then we can plunge into the budget overview. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We will now proceed to Item 5. This is Presentations and Discussion of the Fiscal Year 2023 Proposed Budget. And from here, I will turn it over to the city manager, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So first off, we're going to have a budget overview. Doug's going to approach the podium here, and he will give us a presentation. He gives us just an overview. We'll look at it financially, on the revenues, the expenses, generally talk about the departmental budgets. As we typically do, we don't have every single department scheduled to present. We schedule generally to have those that are larger departments that are more public-facing. And so Doug will present that. But I want to, as we go into this, just acknowledge all of the employees that participate in this process. It really, by design and our financial policies, our process, our budgetary process is decentralized so that the people that are actually out there involved in the work get involved in preparing the budget. And so there's many employees that are here that have had involvement in the budget in the room today, but there's hundreds of employees out there in the departments that get involved either in the preparation of the budget or the implementation of the budget. And I just want to acknowledge their work. I really appreciate the leadership of all our department directors and all those employees that get involved in preparation of the budget and ultimately with the implementation of the budget. So I just wanted to acknowledge everyone's participation in this, express my appreciation to Doug and his team in the Finance Department for their work in leading us through this budget process, and I'll let Doug kick us off with the introduction.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Doug Dowler, Assistant Finance Director and Budget Director, pleased to present the proposed fiscal year 23 budget to you. Before I begin, I would like to recognize my staff. As the city manager mentioned, it takes a lot of work to get to this point, and I want to thank those on my staff. If you'd stand up. Christina Hankins is helping me with the presentation, Latisha Jackson, Jessica Looney, Lori Hurd, Jeff Mosier, Ian Hutchison, Daniel Dorgan, Steve Akins. Fantastic staff, and they've done a great job, and I appreciate all their work that they've done this year. So we'll go ahead and start with the budget overview. It takes a look here at our total budget is $1,836.1 million. That's an increase of about 8.4%. That's primarily due to increases in the MAPS-IV program, which increased by $131.6 million. The general fund is up 11.4% over the current year budget of $557, and it totaled $557.1 million. Now, this high level of growth is really attributable to the extraordinary sales tax growth we've seen in the current year. The budget amendment that was adopted last week is not included in the slide or in the budget book here. There just wasn't time to get that factored in once we knew it had passed. So but if you include the amendment, the FY23 budget would only be an increase in the general fund of $10 million, about 1.8%. The reason for such low growth next year is concern that there could be a recession coming in the coming year. Other operating funds are up by 11.3% at $281 million. A big contributor there is the MAPS-IV Use Tax Fund, which grew by $15 million. And other significant operating funds include airports, utilities, stormwater drainage utility funds, as well as the fire and police sales tax. So for this coming year, we're looking...
Doug, sorry, only because that's like such an important slide, and a lot of people's stories and takeaways will focus on that one number right there, 1.8 billion. I want to issue my standard disclaimer here, that that, as you know, includes about half a billion dollars that you kind of know right now you're not going to spend.
Right. This gives us the budget authority to be able to do things like encumber projects that take several years to complete, but we need to have all the money in place first, like the MAPS, all the MAPS programs. We have to have the money in place before we start, so we budget that. Like you say, we won't spend all of that during the coming fiscal year, but we have the budget authority to begin those projects as needed. That's a good point. All right, as we look at our positions here, we're looking at an increase of 123 positions to just under 5,000 authorized positions. That's an increase of about 2.5%. This is the largest total of city employees, but some context is appropriate. If we look back 10 years to the FY14 budget, the number of positions in the coming year is up about 9% from that total 10 years ago. During that same timeframe, the population in Oklahoma City is up over 13%. So growth in city employees has lagged the growth in our population over the last 10 years. As we take a look at our departments, I'm just going to touch on these quickly here. We're going to start with public safety. Fire adds 18 firefighters and four civilians. Although not housed in the fire department, the General Services Department is adding a seven-person crew to renovate fire stations. There's a long list of repairs, renovations, and remodels that are needed in the fire stations, and this crew will be dedicated to improving our fire stations. We often kind of gloss over this, but I think it's important to note that the city has been fully funding police and fire equipment replacement each year from the use tax proceeds associated with our temporary sales taxes. So funding for up to $23.5 million is budgeted for fire equipment replacement in FY23, ensuring that firefighters have up-to-date vehicles and equipment they need to do their work effectively. Police adds eight civilian positions to handle non-injury accident investigations. Five dispatchers are added in 911, and nine other civilian positions are added in police, including a licensed professional counselor and a chaplain. Funding is included to expand the size of the crisis intervention team to about 200 officers. And as we noted with fire, police equipment replacement is fully funded through the temporary use tax funds in FY23. Now, there will be significant work going on in the coming year to implement the recommendations of the Law Enforcement Task Force and the Community Policing Working Group. There is $2.4 million budgeted in our non-departmental budget for implementing the recommendations from these groups, as well as the Homelessness Task Force and the Human Rights Commission. Turning to Public Works, we have a significant operational change that has very little budgetary impact. After water and wastewater have made repairs to their pipes under a road, a temporary patch is put in place, and then Public Works follows to make the permanent repair. In recent years, that work has been done by city crews. In FY23, the department will switch to contracting this work. This will reduce 29 positions in Public Works. Now, the Public Works Department has a significant number of vacancies in the Streets Traffic and Drainage Maintenance Division, so everyone whose position is being eliminated already has a position waiting for them in Public Works. There should be no disruption to the employees. An additional four crew members are added to pothole repair crews, and eight other positions are added throughout the department. Development Services adds four positions in animal welfare and three positions in the Development Center. An organizational change impacts the staff count in Development Services. The seven employees in the subdivision and zoning division are moving to the Planning Department. That division was part of planning before the creation of the Development Services Department. With this move, it appears that Development Services has no change in staffing in FY23, even though seven positions are being added. In the Planning Department, we add a position to coordinate Infrastructure Act grants and a position to work with geographic information systems. With the move of subdivision and zoning to planning, the department shows an increase of nine positions. I also want to note that an RFP for homeless outreach services will be released soon, and the resulting contract will help address recommendations from both the homelessness and law enforcement policy task forces. Funding for the contract will come from the $2.4 million budgeted in non-departmental for task force recommendations. Initial funding for Bus Rapid Transit is included in the FY23 budget, and that includes three city positions and 24 COTPA positions to begin implementation of the BRT. Another change in fiscal year 23 is the transition to parking enforcement from police to public transportation and parking with the addition of five positions. The police department will retain their police service technicians who currently perform parking enforcement and will be able to reassign them to other responsibilities. Higher fuel prices resulted in a $600,000 increase in general fund support for COTPA. During the height of the pandemic, COTPA was able to use their CARES funding to help reduce the general fund subsidy, and we've been gradually building back the general fund subsidy and added $2 million in the FY23 budget to get us close to full funding from the general fund. Utilities adds a dozen positions in the customer service line of business. In solid waste, two refuse collector positions are added, and across the other divisions, 10 positions are added. Higher prices for chemicals at the water treatment plants results in an $800,000 increase in the water fund. A significant change in parks and recreation is the addition of contract mowing for medians and rights-of-way. This addition frees up positions to help improve mowing frequencies in parks, create a trail maintenance crew, and an athletic field equipment maintenance crew. Two irrigation technicians are included in the FY23 budget to help maintain sprinkler systems throughout the city. And finally, staffing for the Willa D. Johnson Center is included in the FY23 budget. The city manager's office adds positions in diversity, equity, inclusion, special events programming or permitting. The MAPS office adds a position to help manage the multiple initiatives that are underway across the org... Oh, sorry, the MAPS office adds a position and one position to help manage the multiple initiatives that are underway across the organization. As previously noted, there is $2.4 million set aside in non-departmental to fund recommendations from the human rights, or human rights task force. Higher fuel costs increased the fleet services budget by $1 million. As noted during the discussion of fire, seven positions are being added in general services to create a fire station renovation team. The team will operate under building management and will, with the supplies being provided by the fire department. Other additions include a fleet service rider and a building maintenance mechanic. The IT department adds three positions to support utilities and utility systems and two positions to support security operations. In addition, the annual cost for software systems increases by $1.3 million in the coming year. Other changes include three accounting positions in finance, an audit manager, and an employee relations manager in HR. And the last position additions we'll touch on are in the municipal council's office with the addition of an attorney to work on economic development issues and an attorney in litigation. As we noted, just in terms of some of the overall highlights, we included $2.4 million in non-departmental for task force recommendations. We bumped up support for the First Americans Museum to $1 million. That's in addition to the $2 million the Chickasaws are contributing to operations next year. An increase of over $130 million to the MAPS-IV Program Fund is a significant driver of the overall budget. And finally, we've budgeted $58 million in the Grants Management Fund for continued implementation of American Rescue Plan Act and Emergency Rental Assistance Programs. So as we take a look at some of the budget numbers, we'll start with the driver for our budget, our revenues. The largest recurring revenue source is taxes. They total $780 million, or 43% of the total. Sales taxes, the largest source in that category, is over $453 million of the total. Other areas to note are fund balance, our second-largest revenue source, with MAPS-IV, MAPS-III, and Better Street Safer City accounting for more than half of that fund balance total. Federal grants are down from last year but still account for over $117 million in next year's budget. When we turn to the operating portion of the budget, revenue totals $838.3 million. The operating budget strips away our capital and non-operating funds like MAPS-IV and Better Street Safer City, and this gives you a better perspective on the resources available to provide services to our residents. Again, taxes are also the largest revenue source in the operating budget totaling $525 million, or 63% of total, and fund balance becomes a much smaller part at just 3%. When looking specifically at the general fund, the distribution is somewhat similar to the operating budget, with taxes making up 72% of the total, sales tax accounting for 53% at $296 million. Use tax has become a bigger portion of the general fund, is projected to total $92 million, or 17% of the total. So sales and use tax account for more than 2/3 of our general fund budget. Turning to the expenditure side, we'll first look at the overall total, and using the categories outlined in the Municipal Budget Act to divide up our $1.8 billion budget, personal services is the largest category at 32%, followed by capital at 24%, and right behind that, other services, which include contracts, utilities, and chargebacks, and at 23%. When you narrow into the operating budget, the amount going toward personal services becomes the majority. In fact, it's about 2/3 of the total. As we exclude the capital expenditures and move into operations, people become the primary expense, as expected there. As we focus in even further on the general fund, personal services continues to be the vast majority of expenses at 69%, other services at 23% include, as we said, utilities, contracts for service, but also our payments for COTPA and some of those other, OSED and other trusts. Supplies, capital, and transfers are all fairly small and total 8%. And I would like to point out that capital funding doesn't show up in the general fund as a category, but that's because we do it as a transfer to the Capital Improvements Fund. So $6.25 million is a transfer that we make to the Capital Improvement Fund where we do fund capital improvements like our fleet replacement and building maintenance. Taking a look at the general fund by service area lets you see in broad terms where we spend general fund dollars. Public safety makes up the majority at 62%, or $344 million, and you can see the other categories range between 9 and 18%. As we develop the budget each there, there are standards and best practices we follow. Obviously, we follow state law in the development of our budget, and you will see that in the fund summary section of the budget book. That is the section of the budget book that is officially adopted, and that structure is spelled out in the Municipal Budget Act. The Government Finance Officers Association operates the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and it recognizes governments that follow the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting and GFOA's best practices on budgeting. Each year, our budget is reviewed by GFOA and peer reviewers to see if we meet those best practices. GFOA looks at our budget document not only as a financial document but also as a communications device and an operations guide. And in Oklahoma, only five other municipalities received the award last year. And fiscal year 22 was the 34th year that the city has received this recognition from GFOA. Again, this year, we've divided the book into two volumes. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to kind of walk through that with you. The smaller volume that you have here is our performance report, and this contains the issues and the strategies that the departments are using to address those strategies, as well as the performance measures that they've identified to help measure their progress towards those various issues. And you'll see we've got measures for all departments in the city, as well as some previous year's actuals, the current year projections, and projections and target for next year. In the larger volume here, this is the proposed budget. We've got the introduction that has some good material about the city, as well as the manager's introduction. It also goes over kind of our assumptions behind our revenue and expenditure projections. I'm sorry, that's in the next section. The financial summaries is where we kind of talk about our revenue and expenditure projections and have a summary of the overall budget. The departmental budgets provide more detail on the different programs and funding in each department for their budget. And then the fund summaries, as I mentioned, these, this is the official part of the budget book that will, is the document that will be adopted. This will look just like this on June 7th. Are these fund summaries that summarize each of our funding sources and how those are divided by department. The capital budget gives an overview of our, of the projects. They're expected to be done next year. And then our appendix provides our policies and compliance, our glossary, and other sort of reference doc, reference materials to kind of go along with the, with the budget. Again, it's a lot to go through, but happy to answer any questions about that as you come across that. I will say again, and the document is available on OKC.gov now for residents and others who might want to take a look at that. This year, we're going to follow the same public comment process we used last year. As I said, the budget's available on OKC.gov, and starting today, we open our 20-day comment period. A summary of all the comments received on the budget will be presented to council at the May 31st council meeting. And in addition to today's department presentations, we'll have more on May 17th and on May 31st, and there will be public hearings at both of those meetings, as well as a chance for public comment at the public hearing on June 7th. There are going to be multiple ways for residents to comment on the budget during this 20-day comment period. On OKC.gov/budget, there is a form that allows people to enter their comments there. We have an email address, budgetcomments@OKC.gov. They can text their comments to the Action Center, write a letter to the city clerk's office. As I said, we'll put all of those comments together and present those at the May 31st council meeting. So this week, we have presentations from police and fire. On May 17th, Parks, Development Services, Planning, and Public Transportation and Parking will present their budgets. On May 31st, Public Works, Utilities, and Airports will present, and adoption of the budget is set for June 7th. And again, at each of those meetings, there's a chance for public comment. So with that introduction, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the budget overall.
Thanks, Doug. Any questions? All right. Like you said, there's a lot to consume here. It's a lot of information. So if there's questions along the way, just feel free to reach out to us, and we'll get responses back to you. So thank you. I really appreciate that. Again, again to you and your staff. Appreciate all your work in getting this prepared. So next up, we have Chief Gorley to present the police department's budget, give us an overview of their budget for this year.
Our, our budget is in your budget book under C137, if you want to look at that as we go through. I'm going to start off while Sergeant Hepler's pulling up the presentation. Just, first of all, I want to thank all the members of the Oklahoma City Police Department, all of our employees, both non-sworn, professional staff, and sworn, that nothing could get done without them having the initiative and being creative as they are, and just the desire and the drive to make this city a better place. Nothing would happen for sure. And then I also definitely want to thank my command staff that's here today. They have a heavy part in, in this budget in making sure that all of the things that we want to do are implemented, that the vision comes to fruition. And then I also have to thank, just for this presentation, that this would not have happened without Sergeant Hepler working on this, Sergeant Crump, my executive officer, and my financial manager, business manager, Mike Stroup. They do a lot of work behind the scenes to make this happen, and couldn't do it without them for sure. So to start off with, when we go through the presentation this morning, you'll see areas where we'll tie to LFR measures, and then what I want to tell you is at the end, in our very last slide, we have kind of put together where each of these proposals are things that we'll be implementing, how they tie to task force in the Community Policing Working Group, how those all tie in together. So just to let you know that that'll, that'll be part of that as well. And I also want to point out that it is still very difficult to hire police officers. We're seeing some encouraging signs. This next recruit class, that'll start in July, will have 45 personnel recruits in that class. And so we are seeing some encouraging signs there, but we're also still, still seeing a larger amount of people leave this profession. We're seeing that all around the country, and it's very competitive and, and hard to hire and replace those positions. So what we've tried to do through this budget, and the reason you see increases in civilian and non-sworn staffing levels, is that that's how we're filling in the gaps. That's how we're freeing up our police officers to better be able to fight crime and do the things that they need to do and respond to those more serious incidents, and allow those lower-level, lower-priority type calls and things to be handled in other ways. So we're trying to get creative with that. We all know we need more police officers, but we've got to fill the slots that we've got before we start looking at that. So just so you'll know, that's kind of the, the theme as we go through this. So our first slide that we'll start off with is our mission, there it is, our mission, vision, and core values. The mission of the Oklahoma City Police Department is to deliver exceptional police services to our community with integrity, compassion, accountability, respect, and equity. services to our community with integrity, compassion, accountability, respect, and equity. And that acronym spells out I-Care, and that is our core values. The core values are central to everything that we do in the police department. It's how we hold our, our folks accountable. It's how we recognize when they excel and do things that are, that go beyond that service is we tie it to a core value. And by doing that, it helps us more work together to meet that mission and vision. This is also, used to our recruit classes, they would each come up with a motto for their class. Well, now, their motto is those core values, because we want to start that right off from the bat, right in the get-go as they enter the police department. We want them understanding and knowing what those core values mean and how to tie them to our mission and our vision. Because the vision of the police department is to ensure that Oklahoma City is one of the safest cities in the country through strong community relationships, innovative strategies, and healthy, well-trained officers. So, in the next slide, you'll see our proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget. It's a total of just over two-hundred-and-fifty-nine million dollars, divided among our administration, investigations, operations, public safety support, special operations. Each of the bureaus has a deputy chief over it, and that's where you see how those funds are divided to help meet those goals. If you look at our budgeting source for fiscal year twenty-three, the majority, sixty-three percent, is funded by the general fund, and then the next highest level would be the police sales tax fund at twenty-one percent, and then you can see a breakdown there of how the others shift out. So, again, as I said before, adding non-sworn to compensate for those sworn shortages and help us become a more efficient police department to still be able to respond to those, those higher-level and higher-priority calls. Also, keep in mind, it takes over a year, really close to about a year and a half to get a police officer from hired to fully functioning police officer out on patrol, out on the streets of Oklahoma City. So, first off, when you look at our increases in, in what we're asking for, number one, you got to factor in fuel costs. That's expected to be over a million dollars in the next fiscal year. We're going to add the civilian property crime specialist positions, eight of those, and we've been talking about, just recently, we made changes to the ordinance that was done here recently in this chamber to help those non-sworn personnel respond to those non-injury accidents. We already have a group of those property crime specialists that do respond to lower-priority calls where there's not a suspect present at the scene, and they can help collect evidence and things such as that. So, we'll just be adding to that to allow them to be a force multiplier to take these non-injury accident calls. The adding of the nine-one-one dispatcher positions, there'll be five of those, and the way that these two areas here help meet LFR measures is this will help keep us responding to those life-threatening calls within nine minutes and thirty seconds, and also answer those nine-one-one calls within ten seconds. And then those percent of life-threatening calls, priority one, dispatched within two minutes and thirty seconds, those do meet our LFR measures. Crime analysts, we've learned, have become a big force multiplier in the police department because they help determine crime trends. They also help us identify within areas where crime is elevated, identify who the individuals are in those areas that are committing those crimes. It helps us be more targeted in our approach. It's good for the community, too, because we don't go into neighborhoods anymore and stop everything that moves because there's crime in that neighborhood, because we know there's good folks in there. We identify who the ones are that are committing those crimes and target those individuals or those groups that are committing those. And so, those analyst positions are going to be very helpful in doing that. Also adds a civilian licensed professional counselor position. Both the Community Policing Work Group and the Task Force put a high priority on police officer wellness. We're one of the few major cities in the country that does not have a licensed professional counselor, and we believe that's very important in the mental health and well-being of our officers and their families. It adds a civilian family and community teamwork program or FACT coordinator. This is, this is very good for our FACT program that already excels in what they're doing, but it just helps those police officers become more in tune with the community, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. It also adds funding for incentive pay to certify additional officers as CIT Crisis Intervention Team officers. I'll talk a little bit more about that in, in some of the slides that are coming up, but that incentive pay will boost, will allow us to add more of those. And so, with those, with these additions, LFR measures that we're looking at there is the percent of property crimes cleared by arrest, prosecution, or other means, and the person crimes cleared by arrest. Because again, it's allowing us more time to focus, and those analysts allow us to be more targeted in finding the individuals committing the crimes. So, one of the things that I believe has made the biggest difference in de-escalation and the way that our officers respond to critical incidents, to persons in distress, you know, more violent type of encounters, and slowing things down, is our reality-based training unit. The goal of the reality-based training unit is to simulate realistic, critical incidents through scenario-based training and continually enhance each officer's ability to adapt to stress, make sound tactical decisions that further our commitment to the sanctity of life. This is developed to provide that realistic scenario base for the training for the entire department, and it started in February of 2021. Some things that they emphasize are de-escalation tactics, teamwork, communication, critical decision-making, medical aid, and post-force aid. Most recently, they also received a certification by the Police Executive Research Foundation, also known as PERF. There's a concept that they developed several years ago called ICAT, and it's Integrating Communication and Tactics. And that ICAT training has been considered the standard around the country for all major cities and, and police departments as they learn to better deal with and handle de-escalation. And our reality-based training unit just recently became certified in that and have integrated those principles into, into that training. So, just to look at what they're doing, just some, some numbers there, they've trained over one-hundred-and-eighty-five patrol officers from all four divisions in an eight-hour critical skills class, a little bit of advanced training to provide to some of our officers. They've returned twenty-five officers to full duty after a critical incident prior to the implementation of the reality-based training unit. If our officers were involved in a critical incident and they were cleared criminally and administratively, they just went back to work and were put right back out on the streets. Now, it's a holistic approach through wellness and through reality-based training that gets those officers prepared and better able to deal with those situations, and they come back out more, more, more able to deal with critical situations again if they're faced with that. Thirty-four officers have been given training reviews for areas needing improvement if we identified an area that an officer needed to do something better at. They provided advanced training, the topic-specific training to our violent crimes apprehension teams, K-9 officers, early intervention programs. This is something that's new, too. Prior to this, the recent addition of this, if an officer was identified through an early intervention status, they were pretty much, the, the review was done administratively only, and there was nothing to go along with that. Now, as part of those early intervention program identifications, if an officer gets, gets flagged, so to speak, in that early intervention, they have to go meet with wellness, and then also, reality-based training will review those incidents again to determine if there's any training issues. So, next thing I want to talk about is our Axon system. This has been a huge upgrade in technology for the police department, not only in de-escalation, but in transparency and being able to see and show the community more about what we're doing. It's very advanced. This is something that we're very excited about and that we've already begun implementation of, and it's only going to get better as we go. So, as of right now, with the Axon implementation, we've rolled out body cameras to all of our uniformed officers. Previously, an officer would have to share a body camera, so they come in from their shift, they'd have to put that camera on a charger, and then somebody coming in on the next shift would pick those up. Also, the cameras that we had were completely out of date, they were failing, they weren't lasting a shift in a lot of cases, and just, you know, they had outlived their life, technologically speaking. So, with the new body cameras, each officer is assigned a body camera, and the thing that's unique with these is that now they have automatic activations. For example, if an officer draws their firearm, the cameras automatically come on. But not only that, any officers that are in a certain radius of that, so if there's several officers on a call, one camera activates, the other cameras activate as well. So, it's from an officer's safety standpoint, the officers don't have to worry about hitting a button during a stressful situation, but then also, too, as it relates to transparency, all the officers out there on those calls now are going to have their cameras come on as well. It's, and, and again, the, probably one of the biggest things is the fact that the officers no longer have to, have to share those body cameras. So, the next thing that we've implemented as part of this Axon purchase is what they call the Fleet Camera. We've never had these in our patrol cars, we've never had cameras in the cars, we've had body cameras on the officers, but there's a lot of things that can be picked up through cameras inside the car. So, the Fleet Camera System provides two cameras per vehicle. It's one, one camera that's a forward-facing view out the windshield, and then another camera that's in the backseat where someone would be detained, so that anything happening in that vehicle is going to get picked up. The biggest thing, too, about the cameras is they have automatic activation as well. When the officers turn their overhead lights on, the cameras can automatically come on. And this is something that we're in the process right now of negotiating a change in procedure with the FOP. We believe we've got that accomplished, and I'm hopeful that that will be done here within the next week or two, that will, that will be finalized. But the automatic activation is something that will be very helpful to the officers as well. Another thing, too, with the forward-facing camera and the vehicle cameras is they're, they're equipped with an automated license plate reader. And so, as the officers are, are driving through town, going call-to-call, and, and just, you know, working and being out and about, if a vehicle crosses the path and that license plate is entered in the National Crime Information Computer to be stolen, or to have someone in the vehicle that's possibly committed a felony crime, a missing person, missing juveniles, those kind of things, that license plate reader will automatically pick that up. We've already seen success with that in recovering stolen cars and other criminal activities. So, that's a big force multiplier for us as well. The next thing as part of the Axon purchase is the, what's called the Conducted Energy Weapon. Most of you are probably familiar with the term Taser. We purchased advanced Taser VII models that allow, for example, multiple deployments instead of a single deployment. This can really help when it comes to de-escalation and it comes to bringing a violent situation to a successful conclusion without resulting to deadly force. In the past, the officers got one shot if the Taser didn't deploy the way it needed to, the probes didn't reach an area, they had to reload that, that cartridge, and in a lot of times, they didn't have enough time to do that. So, they had to result to escalating force. In this instance, they'll get two tries at that, and hopefully, even if someone's wearing thick clothes, the probes will get a penetration, so we're more likely to hopefully resolve a situation without resorting to deadly force. Another thing, too, that's, that's unique to the new Tasers is when the Taser is activated, the body camera is also activated as well. So, now the officer's not pushing a button here and having to worry about using their Taser and getting that functioning as well. We've got about four-hundred-and-fifty of these with sixty more in reserve for the recruit classes. Our goal now is to get these issued to all of our officers as they're coming out of the academy and get as many out on the street as possible so that we can have more options to allow the officers that help in not resorting to deadly force unless absolutely necessary. This is something that, to me, is really interesting and exciting, these virtual reality headsets. I've, I've actually used one of these and, and been on it, gone through a scenario. It is very realistic, and it allows us not only to train our officers, but what we're discovering with this is like through our Citizen Academy groups, other groups that come in, we, we can put our residents through scenarios as well. And you can do it from different perspectives. You can have the perspective of the officer, or you can have the perspective of the person that the officer's talking to or that's in crisis. And so, these are, allow us to do, and it really expand a lot of our reality-based training, because you can put a lot of different scenarios into these. The training focuses on developing empathy and awareness of tactical concerns, as well as the officer's mental preparedness. These scenarios are updated monthly by Axon in collaboration with subject matter experts with extensive experience in mental health intervention, education, and clinical crisis intervention. And that's another big advantage to these, is having that updated training. The next thing that's been part of our Axon integration systems has been our small unmanned aerial systems, or drones. They've been in use since December 2021 and proven to be an effective tool for officers, and the program is deployed at each division in the city. Most of the time, and a lot of the time, what they're used for is crime scenes and processing those, but we've also used them to help apprehend suspects after foot pursuits, locating subjects on felony warrants, loud alarms. I can remember as a patrol officer, when you go to check a business, if, a lot of times, what happens is the, the burglars will make entry through the roof of the business, and you don't know that, and you can't tell it. And so, what'll happen is a lot of times, officers respond to a call of an alarm, they get there, they don't realize somebody's in there because they can't see the roof, and it's not found until the next morning. Well, now, if we're getting those alarm activations, we can deploy a drone, check the roof real quick, make sure it's clear, and it really is a force multiplier in that. We've located runaway juveniles, burglars, missing juveniles. Most recently, we had an individual that was a victim of a severe beating, happened at a hotel, and there was a wooded area nearby there. The suspects in that case took that victim and, and basically dumped him in the woods. He would have definitely died there, probably not have been found for a long time, and when the officers were deployed out there, they were able to locate that individual because some witnesses said that, that they saw them taking this victim out to this location. They couldn't have found him without that drone, it was dark that night. He was still alive when they found him, he did end up passing away, but just something like that shows how beneficial these drones are. We currently have sixteen, sixteen systems with qualified operators, plans in place to expand that and expand the training. Another way that these are being used is in large public events where you need to monitor a crowd for safety reasons, and, and doing that from an elevated position like that is a big advantage. All of these drones are deployed according to FAA regulation and certifications. All the officers have to receive specialized training, and requirements for deploying the drone are followed through a chief's directive that we have, as well as SOPs that guide that deployment. So, just to kind of summarize, with the Axon technology, it's just going to continue. We've got upgraded video components to produce higher-quality video. Some upcoming features are going to include wireless download of video from the cameras, so the officers will no longer have to dock those or sync them up. A big thing, too, and we've already used it to help locate an officer that was in trouble, is the cameras have GPS. So, if the officer gets away from their car, you know, maybe chasing someone out to an area, maybe a wooded area, things like that, when the officers get there, they can now find them, and we actually had a dispatcher guide some officers to an officer they couldn't get back on the radio fairly recently. Evidence.com is a new digital evidence management system, and probably the biggest thing with that is now, if you look around the community, all of our, almost all of our residents in their homes, they have cameras, businesses have cameras. In the past, it was a real cumbersome product, process to get that video. Now, residents that are victims of crime can upload their own video, too. We send them a link, they upload it, and then our investigators have almost immediate access to that video as well. One of the things that we changed during the past year is we did away with what was known as the impact units at each division that handled lower-level narcotics and other complaints within the divisions, and we created the Street Narcotics Unit that's more centralized and, and located within our Special Projects Division. Street Narcotics is formed to establish a centralized unit to investigate street-level narcotic complaints and violations. It gives our residents a more streamlined way to, to report those drug crimes and other crimes that are going on in their neighborhoods and do that anonymously, and allow us to respond to that. Probably the biggest thing, though, that I'll tell you about this, that I'm, I think I'm the most proud of, and, and us as a staff are, is we're one of the few agencies in the country that is now responding to all overdose deaths, because what happens is if you have one individual that succumbs to an overdose, that drug that's causing that is still out there and it's still being pushed by a dealer somewhere, and you'll usually have more, and we'll get multiple deaths, usually a result of fentanyl. Put in some drugs that, that the person taking the drugs may not even know it's in. And so, a unit will now respond to those drug overdose deaths and start doing everything they can to work those backwards and see if they can apprehend that dealer and get that stopped. Our Office of Media Relations, one of the things we continually hear when we meet with the community, it was brought up several times in the Task Force and the Community Policing Working Group, is we're not getting enough information out about what we're doing. So, we've really upped what we've done at the Office of Media Relations, and, and we added two employees, one to be our social media specialist and another to be a videographer to help us put out videos. Also, what we've done with the Office of Media Relations that came out of the Task Force recommendations was that we issued a chief's directive in June of 2021 that commits us to releasing legally permissible body-worn camera video to the public within ten days following a critical incident, and in the case of an officer-involved shooting, within ten days of the officer's interview. 10 days of the officer's interview. So, transparency through the Office of Media Relations is what we're all about as well as educating the public in what we do. With the expansion of the unit, we've produced over 150 videos that have been produced for social media, internal use or special events. They can be used for training or just educating our officers as well. Just to give you some idea, in 2021, the OCPD YouTube page observed over a 90%, over a 90% increase in views, almost a 400% increase in watch time and a 70% increase in subscriptions, increases in audience and likes and comments. One thing too, that I didn't realize until recently, we started looking at what we're doing as compared to other agencies and we have a larger social media following than a lot of the larger agencies in the country. It was very surprising to me, but it's all a credit to our staff that continually work. They do stuff on the weekends and the evenings or they're always working to help get that message out, not only about what we're doing, but public safety items as well. One of the things that was brought up recently, I believe Councilman Cooper brought it up about our domestic violence program and our assistance and our advocates through the YWCA. So, one of the things that we're doing through this budget year is increasing our contract with them so that we can add an advocate and it's just going to allow us to reach more people and work better with more victims in the community to get them the resources that they need. And just kind of an overview of Palomar here, you can see the stats and numbers. It's really amazing what they do, but I thought it was very interesting too, that in 2021, they served 4,340 unduplicated clients. And this is a 48% increase from 2020 with over 13,761 client visits. Having a one-stop shop with, to help our domestic violence victims is crucial because we all know Oklahoma has continually been on the higher end of domestic-related homicides. So, we're doing everything we can to change that narrative. And I believe too, that more people are seeking help now because it's easier to do that. When a victim doesn't have to go to multiple places to get a VPO, to get assistance for their families, place to live, those kind of things. And one of the biggest things, believe it or not, that has made, I think, the biggest difference in this is Palomar recognized that a big barrier to victims seeking help was the fact that they had pets and a lot of shelters didn't take care of the pets or financially, they might not be able, if they separate from their abuser, they may not be able to support those pets. So, Palomar now focuses heavily on the pet care as well and getting those animals food and vet care and other things that they need. And it's been a big difference in getting people out of those homes where they are being abused because now they don't have to leave their pets behind. I talked earlier about the new, the FACT coordinator. This was an overage position from the previous year. We just recently filled this position, but this civilian coordinator will work with the officers to help plan, organize, coordinate activities to enhance participation in the service and delivery of all of the things that they're doing. It'll really help the officers focus on the time they're spending with the kids and allow that coordinator to be more involved in the community to help, again, coordinate those events and direct and guide on what's the most productive for us to do. Police Athletically continues to be a big, a big thing for us in the police department, a big service to the community. Kids involved in sports, we know that they tend to have better grades, they stay in school longer. But, the thing about the PAL program that I think I'm the most proud of with what those folks are doing over there is they're adapting to what's going on. And it's not just traditional sports now. They have a big impact in the electronic age and adapting to what's called esports. And this is something that's growing around the country. Colleges and universities are now providing scholarships for folks, just like they do with traditional sports. And we're getting more and more involved in partnering with Oklahoma City Public Schools and getting our kids the resources that they need. For example, through a grant, we were able to provide some gaming equipment. And if you go into the PAL offices now, you'll see where they have video screens and the game setup and kids in there doing that. And it's, it's really become a big thing and a big outreach to the community and to our kids. I just want to touch on, I know we've touched on it many times, but it's just so important, our medical monitoring unit and the contributions that they've made over the last several years regarding the COVID pandemic. I truly believe they've saved lives, they've saved the lives of our first responders. And just as an example, you know, just recently retired Captain Frank Barnes is in this slide where he received the Employee of the Year in January of 2021. And then, in the below picture, Sergeant Kim Holmes received the Downtown Exchange Club Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award along with Fire Department Lieutenant Billy Downs receiving the Firefighter of the Year Award. And again, this was all attributed to that medical monitoring unit. And I really don't know of another agency in the country that was that proactive and created a unit that their sole purpose was to keep their employees healthy and help them navigate through the, not only the city process of getting the medical care and the IOD stuff worked out or the injury-on-duty stuff worked out, but just the health in general of not only the employees, but their families. So, back to the Crisis Intervention Team, we talked a little bit about at the start. This year, we hosted a 40-hour Department of Mental Health CIT certification course. Forty-seven of our officers attended and completed that course. And obviously, the CIT program, the mental health training is now going to be expanded like we talked about a little bit earlier. Even though the officers in the academy will not be certified as a CIT officer and will not receive that incentive pay, they will receive the full CIT training course now. And so, that's a big thing. We've never done that before. And also, as said before, as mentioned in the previous presentation, we're going to be adding our CIT certified positions. We're going to go from an allotted 158, we're going to add 42 and that'll get us at 200, which gives us 35% of our total patrol officers that will now have the CIT certification. Again, if you'll remember, CIT International recommends 20 to 25%. So, we'll be at 35%, but then also too, as a multiplier to that, all of our recruits will now be going through this CIT training. In 2021, we responded to over 21,000 mental health-related calls for service and those are the ones that we just know that were clearly identified and came into 911 calls as a mental health consumer in need of assistance. Of the total mental health-related calls, 40% of those resulted in an individual either being taken into custody by the police department or transported to a hospital by IMSA. An analysis of those individuals and that 40% that were taken into custody shows that 80% of those were transported by officers to either a mental health facility or a medical facility. Only 2.5% of our mental health calls resulted in transport to a detention facility or the public inebriate alternative, also known as detox. One of the things that the legislature really helped us out on in the past year was as of November 1, 2021, we're no longer responsible for those statewide mental health transports. If an officer in Oklahoma City is required to do a transport, if it's greater than 30 miles from our headquarters location, then now the state has a contract vendor that they contract with that will do those transports for us. So, that's been a big help to us. And there's also some current changes in the law that are coming out of this legislative session that I think will help us anymore, even more because now, those individuals that self-present at a hospital can also be subject to that 30-mile transport rule. So, we're hoping that'll, that'll help us anymore, even more. Just to talk about some of our partnerships in the community, you can see here, one of the things that has really benefited the community and helped our officers get resources and needs to the individuals that they encounter on a daily basis is our trust program. It started in August of 2020 with a pilot program in the Spring Lake Division and now has expanded to all the divisions. The trust program enables officers to create referrals from their police car. When they walk away from that call, if they know that individual maybe needs drug crisis assistance or mental health assistance, food assistance, anything like that, they can now start that process and it gets that process going very quickly. Those services are started in a rapid manner, usually within about 24 hours. There's also a process after the fact that we meet regularly to make sure that we're all coordinating and responding as needed to those. Of the, there's been 409 times that an officer's identified a need in the community and mobilized resources. Of those referrals, 315 have been closed as a positive contact. I've been meeting regularly with the Department of Mental Health as they get ready to roll out their 988 crisis call line. This is something that I think is going to be a game changer in mental health in the state of Oklahoma. It's going to now place a lot of the resources out there that aren't just on police officers in the middle of the night. It's going to allow that, a alternative response or even a joint response in some cases. And this goes back to as well, why it's so important that we continue to emphasize the training of our dispatchers, that we hire more dispatchers because now that there'll be a new number that people can call when someone's in mental health crisis through this 988, there'll be a statewide call center. I've actually spoken with the group that received the contract and is working to get this call center up and running. They've been active and have been working in the state of Arizona and actually worked with the Phoenix Police Department. I reached out to their chief and they were very complimentary of this program and this process that we'll now have. So, there's going to be a handoff going back and forth is what will happen. People will still call 911 on mental health emergencies just because that's what they've been conditioned to do. But, now that dispatcher has the opportunity, if it's not a violent situation requiring a police officer, to hand that off to the 988 number and get an alternative response to that call, whether it be through an iPad or something over telemedicine or a crisis worker actually responding to that call. So, this is going to be very significant. I think it's going to be good for the department. It also allows 988 to hand those calls back if it's not something they should be handling. So, that coordination between our dispatchers and the 988 call center are going to be crucial and we've been working together actively as this gets rolled out. And it's supposed to begin July 16th of this year. And so, we're working hard to make sure that's as smooth a transition as possible. So, as I said early on in the presentation, tying some things to these task force recommendations just so you can see that, if you look at this slide, it breaks down in bullet points. In the first one where we're increasing dispatcher positions, that's tied to Task Force Recommendation 21 and 22, which was to increase those positions but also provide that training and the new 988 system and working on that handoff and handling those mental health calls. The hiring of a civilian licensed professional counselor, this came out of both the task force and the Community Policing Work Group. And in those recommendations, again, going toward officer wellness. Officer wellness was something we heard continually throughout task force meetings and the Community Policing Working Group. The Office of Media Relations, the use of social media, just increasing transparency, we heard that from the task force and the working group, both many times, is not only talking about what we're doing, but getting better information out on those critical incidents to avoid the speculation and other things that tend to go with that. The hiring of the civilian FACT coordinator connected to task force recommendations as well, and that was heavily focused on youth outreach, that the police department needs to continue to be involved in youth outreach and do everything we can to make those processes better. The CIT expansion continually heard in both areas. So, expanding those CIT positions up to 200 is a big help, but not only that, now training our police officers in the academy, giving them the CIT training even though they won't be certified as a CIT officer. And then, of course, the 988 program, that's going to alternative responses, to joint responses. Just recently, we've deployed a group of social workers through North Care and what's what they're calling a champion program, champions program. They've been going out with our homeless outreach team and the goal is to expand that. The pilot has been with the homeless outreach team and seeing how we can help there in our homeless community and dealing with the drug addiction and mental illness. And they're doing a very good job of getting out in the community. They've been riding with our homeless outreach team and they're starting to respond to more of those incidents. So, that's, that's a big part of, you know, through 988 and through the champions program that, that I think will help us in those alternative and joint responses. So, with that, if folks have any questions at all, I'm willing to answer those. And again, I appreciate your time today as we go through this and I can't thank my staff and all the men and women of the police department enough for helping us do what we do every day.
Thanks, Chief. Are there any questions?
Just real quick, I did have one question, but to comment first. Chief, thank you for your leadership in so many of these things that you bring forward today, just continue to, I think, move the whole department forward in a great way. And I appreciate everything you and the whole department does for this city every day, going out, putting your life on the line. On the drone increases, what's the expectation there that that will go to? Will it be where every station will always have an officer that has a drone available or is that still too big of a task to handle?
The goal is to have a drone available at the division, but it won't be every officer. We'll have to always limit because it's a very specialized training that they have to have and they have to have that certification through the FAA. But, the goal is that in, one of the biggest things, I don't think a lot of people realize is our aircraft don't deploy 24 hours a day. There is a time in there where we're between shifts that we don't have the aircraft. So, that's our goal is to kind of be that force multiplier. But, we've also seen with, with the drones that they can deploy with the aircraft, that the aircraft may see something, but normally, what we would have to do is walk an officer into that situation, which is much more dangerous, you're more likely to have an encounter. It's much easier to de-escalate if you can get a drone in there, get a closer look, realize that is the suspect there and start communicating with them and get them out of that situation. And so, the goal is, to answer your question, that we will have a drone available at each division, but it won't be with every officer.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you for being here today. The CIT training program and increasing that number up to 200 officers, really happy to hear that. I think that's wonderful. The one thing I was a little confused on and could you explain a little more is the CIT training that will be ongoing at the academy for our new officers?
Yeah, so, so basically, right now, there's an incentive pay that's tied to being a CIT officer if they're in the program. And so, we want those officers to get that training, but we don't want to necessarily certify them as a CIT so that they would get the incentive pay. So, they're going to, excuse me, they're going to get the same training that the CIT officers that go through it and get the certification, the police recruits will get the exact same training, but they just won't be called, you know, as part of the team.
And they wouldn't be, but the incentive really ties to, it's a CIT officer, one, you want to make sure they've got more experience as an officer, two, that they've been selected to be in the program, that we feel like it's somebody who fits the program well, but also that they get the call out. Like, if someone calls for a CIT, it would be a CIT certified officer, not just someone who's been through the training.
And it's kind of like other specialized units throughout the department, you know, like our reality-based training unit. Most of those trainers that are involved in that are tactical team officers and they're teaching our police officers the same types of de-escalation training and other tactics that our tactical team has, but they're not part of the tactical team. You want them to have that training, but it's not as specialized and as targeted as, you know, you're not certifying them as one of those positions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Chief. I think these are requests for the City Manager's Office, but feel free to chime in if you need to, just some things I'd like to be a part of. One is, and I appreciate the note about the YWCA, I'm watching The Sopranos for the first time and I just saw a very disturbing episode that deals with sexual assault, so that topic kind of came back to my mind. The Jan, when we met with her, Craig, mentioned a type of training to my fellow counselors that we would be able to do, that would kind of walk us through what their, the kind of training their folk go through to try and understand, responding to people who've experienced sexual assault. And maybe it's time to go ahead and follow up, so I know I'd like to participate in that training and any other council member who would as well. Thank you. And then, relatedly, I'd like to just kind of learn more, if not necessarily in this meeting, but as what you're doing, like what are, what are the, you say you're increasing the budget, but I'd like to know more what that means and what implementation of these sort of new funds, like what it's going toward, how it's helping. This is just something I'm really worried about. So, I don't know if you have anything to say right now, but, or if that's just something that we can just be working on over time. Do you follow what I'm saying?
And you're talking about, as directly relates to the YWCA?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just, we enter into a contract with them for those services. And so, if we, if we're able to increase that budget, it enables them to assign more advocates to us and help us in that manner. Because I do believe that through the pandemic, domestic violence, sexual assault, those kind of things, unfortunately, we have seen arise in those type of crimes and you weren't seeing- And you weren't seeing as much reporting when people were sheltered at home, their kids weren't going to school, you know, employees weren't going to work, and so they weren't, their coworkers weren't seeing the signs of abuse and other things like that. So now that things are kind of getting back to normal, we're starting to see an uptick in those reports. And so that's what we want to be prepared for and still able to deal with those.
The slides having to do with FAT and PAL, well, maybe the whole presentation would be helpful, but I'm very interested in receiving the slides that deal with what's going on with FAT and PAL and the CIT training. And the one that had the information on the mental health calls, the 21,000 calls that we're receiving, I'd like to get those, just so I can process that a little bit better and share that more with residents. I'm curious, for a later conversation, I know Craig and I are going to be talking about violence interruption, and I know some members of the community have already been talking with you, but I'm curious, as we move forward and talk about the violence interruption program, it seems like some of the work you all are doing with trust might be a Venn diagram overlap there. So I just wanted to kind of keep that in mind for later. And then the champions work that you all are doing, is that something where a council person could ride along one day, or is there too many people in the car when that's going on?
I think we could make that happen. I mean, we could, now they're kind of responding more separately, right, than they were initially, but I think we could definitely make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. That would be helpful. Ooh. And then my final two, yeah, if you can just get the whole presentation to us, that would be helpful. But I'm also interested in that task force slide, which raises kind of my still big ask I keep wanting us to do, which is like giving counsel, providing to counsel just sort of like a checklist and a timeline so that we know, you know, the implementation of these things. So do we have any idea when we might start? Is that a later this summer as Ganesha Martin starts?
Yes. I've had discussions with Ganesha, we're hiring a position to be on the ground to do some of the coordination, and so I'm in the process of doing that internally. And so we're selecting that, but we'll develop that and have that information, but it'll be later this summer that we'll have that. And it's not that we're slowing down and waiting, I mean, Chief's talked about it already. There's things that we were actually doing during the process with the task force, but also then things that are moving ahead with some of the things we've got in here right now. So we're not waiting on that, but to develop it and look at the bigger picture so we can start looking, here's things we started doing, and here's things that we're working on, what the timeline looks like.
And is that when we'll have a better understanding? I saw that 2.4 million.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I see that, I see both of those. Like we talked about last time, you know, we had 1.1 when we started. This puts us, I think it's 1.3, I'm sorry, when we started. This adds another million dollar, 1.1 million, so it's 2.4 million. Just knowing that the programs we're talking about, we want to start with some of the pilot programs, we know it's going to expand and the needs are going to be greater. So we wanted to prepare ourselves, and that's when we'll start working through that. But again, it was trying to, I feel like police is going to be very heavy in a lot of the needs that we have with the recommendations on law enforcement, but then also we have the homelessness task force and the HRC, and so we want to make sure we can incorporate those. So we just wanted to build more capacity into that.
And then on homelessness, I know that we're planning on, already the outreach conversation was happening. When will we have kind of a fuller picture of what the city manager's office is going to be proposing in terms of the homelessness outreach dollars and what we're wanting to do with that sort of work?
Right. So there's a couple of things that are working. One, we're working with a consultant that it's on all foundation, and as much foundations are contributing to bringing consulting, it's Clutch Consulting that's going to be working with us on the implementation plan for the homelessness task force recommendations. We're also in the process, working with the planning department on RFP that would be for an outreach, an expansion of civilian outreach for homelessness. And it may border into homelessness and some mental health, but we're going to focus primarily on homelessness, that would work with our homelessness outreach team. So those things are in process right now.
Okay. Thanks. And then, you know, encouraging, and you all know how I feel about all 100% of our officers receiving this training, it's very encouraging to see us go up from that 24 to that 35. So just want to give credit where credit is due there. And yeah, it's just been a lot of work. So thanks, everyone who's participated in it through the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the chief?
All right. Thank you, and thanks, Chief. Appreciate it, all the work and the team. I appreciate all that you all do every day for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chief Kelly with the Fire Department to present the Fire Department
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Richard Kelly, Fire Chief. As we're pulling up the presentation and getting started, I'd like to introduce my staff. And we obviously wouldn't be able to do this without the collective work of everyone together. So as I introduce you, please raise your hand so they can see you. Deputy Chief of Operations, Mike Walker. Deputy Chief of Support Services, Shane Smiley. And Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention Services, Harold Thompson. I definitely wouldn't be able to accomplish this without the help of Clint Regir, our business manager. He's the one that puts these things together, takes care of business every day. And you all, I'm sure, feel safe and secure having a civilian that understands budget overseeing firefighters, so you know how important that is. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to present our proposed FY23 budget presentation. If you'd like to follow along, it does start on page C53 of the proposed budget book. As we get started, you know, the mission of the Fire Department is to provide emergency response, fire prevention, and public education services to the Oklahoma City community so they can have their lives and property protected. Our mission statement is simply respond quickly, safely, courteously, meet the need. And that's so important when we show up every day, that we meet the needs of our residents and our business owners within the community, and we take that very seriously. If you look at just a quick overview of our command chart, our four major divisions that we have, is our operational services under Deputy Chief Mike Walker, and that's the largest area, and we'll get more detailed in that as we go through the presentation. And then our support services area is under Deputy Chief Shane Smiley. And then our fire prevention services is under Deputy Chief Harold Thompson. And then we'll actually look at the administrative services, which actually falls under my purview. Next slide just shows you a quick overview of our services and where our fire stations are located throughout the community. A will note on the northwest corner there, out near Mustang, is Fire Station 38. We're happily moving in that process. Things are going very well. We look to open that station probably around the first of the year. The contractor believes they'll finish it in around November. Takes a little bit of time for us to get in and take care of business there, but really excited for the opportunity for that station to come online. And you can see on the right-hand column there is our, basically an overview of all of our services that we have, our apparatus that we have, our engine companies, ladders, our brush trucks that we have available for wild and urban interface. We do have six battalions throughout the city. And then within these, we have six tankers, four light rescues, a hazmat, heavy rescue, and a water unit to provide services to our community. The next slide, we'll start getting into our expenditures and positions by fund. And you can see this year, from FY22 to FY23, we have a 6.25, I'm sorry, 6.82% increase in our budget. And we're moving from 1,039 positions to 1,061 positions. And kind of breaking that down, the general fund is basically the largest fund of our positions, 844 positions at 118 million. And then our fire sales tax will have 217 positions at 49 and a half million dollars. And then we have several funds that are outlined here. Our MAPS For Use Tax Fund is 21.2 million. And in that, we have vehicle-related replacement funds in there. And we also added an additional year into that because what we're seeing right now is to replace an apparatus, it's about 18 to 24 months. So we're seeing that. So we want to get ahead of that. So we've added some increase in that area for build time. And we also have $8 million in there for bond projects and $1 million for a new maintenance facility that we'll be working on in the future. As we build our new public safety training center, we'll eventually, we'll have to move our maintenance facility, which is at the current location. So that'll be something in the future that we'll have to fund. So we're starting to prepare for that now. The CAIP fund that you see there, I'm sorry, the Better Street Safer City Use Tax, you also see has $2 million, that will be expended on vehicle replacement as well. And then our capital improvement fund, we have 3.7 there, and 1.3 million of that is for station bedroom remodels. And 2.4 was additional funds that we had to add to Fire Station 31, that we're in the process of replacing that. And that's located on 600 North Rockwell. So that's one that we're working on currently to replace, and we had to add some funds to that. Go through some of our major budget changes that we have. You'll see right here, and this is changes in personnel-related costs, such as salaries, merit, retirement, health insurance, and other benefits. Basically, this is same service level without adding any additional staff. That's some roll-up that we had to have within, increased in our budget there. And then you'll see is, like everyone, we're seeing increased in fuel costs, so we had to add some additional fuel costs there. So that's the challenges I believe all departments are going to be facing this year. And then some major budget changes that we looked at and really focused on this year is adding 18 additional firefighter positions in the general fund, and that's to reduce callback overtime and properly staff all needed apparatus in that area. So that's a really important area as we focus, and we'll talk a lot about that, is trying to reduce that overtime cost. We also added funding for recruit overage program, and that allows us to hire above our budgeted number. And the focus in that area is to stay ahead of the curve and to be able to also reduce that overtime cost. So we add an additional, and that comes out of the fire sales tax, but that's an area that we can hire above our allotted number in the budget. And that's in an effort, again, to reduce overtime cost. And then we added something, we'll talk a lot, in the budget, we focused on our firefighters. We believe our firefighters are our greatest asset, and we really tried to focus on that in the budget. And here's one area we did that. We added funding to the wellness program for advanced health screening procedures. And we basically are adding three different areas every five years. We do a physical every year for every firefighter. Every five years now, we're adding that they'll actually get a chest x-ray, and that's something that's required by the NFPA standards on their health and wellness. Every four years, we're going to add an abdominal ultrasound, which is important to look for, you know, cancer and other areas that they might be challenged with. And then every three years, they'll receive a heavy metal blood screening, and that's other areas that we look for cancers and the propensity of that. So we're really focused on that area and excited to be able to roll that out. We have some additional positions we want to focus on. We're adding a system, Analysis 1. And this is an area, everything we do, you know, technology-driven, whether it's at the fire station, on the apparatus, but we want to help develop and create, enhance our web platforms. And that's where we, we call it our fire web, where everything, we base and house everything. That person will focus in this area, especially dealing with security authentication, tables, and processes. So that's really important. As we've grown over the years, we've really focused in our area of IT and tried to become more robust and self-reliant in those areas. As Chief Gorley talked about, we also looked at this from an area, the next position's adding a licensed professional counselor. You know, unfortunately, the trauma and the situations that our firefighters are dealing with almost on a daily basis and the challenges we have there, this will help us to really focus on our firefighters and their family, to be able to make sure they're mentally healthy and resilient and be able to, you know, be able to have a long and prosperous career and obviously retirement after that. So we're really excited for adding this position. We believe it'll really, you know, help in that area. Also, our peer, what we call our peer support program, that's our firefighters out there that are actually trained to help with personnel during critical incident stress in these incidents that we have that are very challenging, that a counselor will be able to work with them and build resiliency programs and help make sure that their well-being is taken care of as well. We're also adding two other positions that are very important for the administrative side, and one is the Office Coordinator. This position will assume administrative dues currently performed for the Deputy Chief of Support, and basically it brings parity across the board. At this time, we do not have an Office Coordinator for our Deputy Chief of Support Services with the continued growth in staff. That's extremely important to make sure we have that area coverage. We're also adding a Fleet Services Administrator, as we talked about earlier, Doug talked about, Chief Gorley. We're very fortunate that we do have funding available right now for apparatus replacement, and we're seeing the fleet continually changing and growing. So this position is extremely important in that area to make sure we're being very diligent in our task and what we're doing, and purchasing and acquisition and repair of these apparatus. We do have a few strategic results I want to bring to you today. And the first one we'll look at is our response time. It's always something we really focus on, is making sure we have, again, as we said, is our mission statement, respond quickly, safely, courteously. And that respond quickly is extremely important to the residents that we serve every day. In this area, you can see from fiscal year 13 through what we see the estimate for fiscal year 22, you've seen that increase in call volume, especially over the last three years. Starting to see the call volume increase. We're on pace to be about where we were this year coming up as we were last year. So in that, our goal is seven minutes or less 70% of the time in the call volume. And you can see over the last several years, we maintain around 65%. This year, if we stay on target where we're at, we'll be above 70 and we'll be reevaluating that goal. That's always something we've been striving to achieve, so that's something we're very close to achieving, and we're excited in that area. The next one we'll talk about is something that you look at is our structure fire fatality rate, and this is a challenging area. We ebb and flow in that area, and that's why education, what we call community risk reduction, is so important. And you can see the national average in that is 1.11 per 100,000 residents. Our goal is to be less than eight fatalities. Unfortunately, we're a little above that this year. That means we're really need to focus on our community risk reduction and those education areas. But one area that we also added over to the right, you'll see that there in gray, is we started tracking our rescues. And a rescue is defined as a civilian rescue is the act of intervening or removing a person from danger while operating at a structured fire. We want to be able to really tell our story to our residents, but as well as to our firefighters, you know, the great work that they're doing every day. And this year, we have 24 rescues where they've actually removed someone from a structured fire. And that's something, this is a new measure, but I just wanted to show that because it's in relate to our fire fatalities. Our firefighters are doing great work every day, and they train hard in this area. And it's something we want to show them so they can see the fruits of their labor, as well as, you know, our residents out there are paying taxes every day. They want to see the efforts of the Fire Department and where that's, they're able to see that tangible, in a tangible way. Next, we're going to look at our fire lines of business here and kind of get into a little bit on the budget. And the first one we'll talk about is the administration. The two major areas in that is our executive leadership program and our public relations and marketing. And we can't say enough about our public relations and marketing, what they do every day, of really building our brand and being able to not just provide community risk reduction efforts or education efforts, but really show what our firefighters are doing every day. And they're really doing an incredible job there. And you can see what the, with 41 positions and the estimate on that, not the estimate, our actual budget on that's 14.7 million dollars. One of the highlights I wanted to bring up here, this is something that we've really focused on, and we're going to be continuing this area, and that's our sleeping quarters and our renovation. We just completed Fire Station 1. That is our largest fire station, but it's a renovation to make it where our firefighters as they're working at night, a lot of times, if you have multiple apparatus at the fire station and you get, and you're sent, they're sent on a call, it wakes everybody up. And what we're seeing is very challenging for sleep deprivation. And the goal of this is to individualize this, where only the personnel that are being called out will actually be awakened to go out on the call. So it's important in sleep deprivation that we have that. And we're also working in that area to identify areas to be more, have more accommodations for our female firefighters as we continue to grow and try to recruit in those areas. So that's something that we also will look at. Very well, very excited, as I mentioned earlier, we have 1.3 million dollars in our CIP budget that will be used for bedroom renovations. We're already looking at the next three stations that we'll be working on. So we'll be moving in that area and starting to address those areas. Right here is, as I mentioned, Deputy Chief Walker earlier, his operational services area with, and Chief Walker has 32 years of service with the Oklahoma City Fire Department. This is our largest operations, our largest area, our largest division, basically broken down into two major areas, and that's our emergency medical services area and our fire operations area. And you see that area, 648 positions there for 92.5 million dollars under emergency medical services, and then 41 million dollars under fire operations area, 291 positions. That's basically broken down by call volume and the areas that we respond. Our highlight that we have is this is something we're very excited. We entered into a partnership. We work, you know, continuously every day with the Oklahoma City Police Department, but this is something we're really excited about. We provided training and was able to move in this, and this is where we're actually providing Hilo operations with Air One. And they actually, we were able to purchase the equipment, provide some training, where they'll actually be able to utilize, you'll see that bucket there, this drop of water is called a is called a Bambi bucket. And we'll actually are very close to putting that in service. We'll be able to utilize that on these wildland urban interface fires that we have in these hard-to-reach areas, these fast-moving fires where they can get out and very quickly apply water. It carries about a hundred and eighty gallons. Doesn't sound like much, but it's quite a bit when you start putting the weight on it and what it does. And it drops a lot of water. If you're under a hundred and eighty gallons and they drop it on you, you'll know real quick. So it's something that we're really excited that that will be in operation before our next wildland urban interface season, which through the summer, we usually slow down as things green up. As we come into the fall, this is something that'll be really come into play. So we're real excited for that service that will be available. Next area is support services under Deputy Chief Shane Smiley, is twenty years of service. The two major areas under support service are fire dispatch and logistics and facilities maintenance. Again, we have twelve point six million dollars there and thirty-five positions. As was mentioned earlier, something that's really important to, for us and our facilities is this fire station renovation team that'll be under general services. We have thirty-eight fire stations once we build new Fire Station Thirty-Eight, and it's a continuous process to keep them updated, make sure that they're, you know, they're friendly and they're very good for our firefighter. So we're really excited about that opportunity to be coming online this year. And our highlight there again is Fire Station Thirty-Eight. We're real excited in that area. We also have a couple other fire stations that'll be, that we'll be working on. We're in the process of Fire Station Thirty-One and moving in that area. And then also our public safety training center, we're really working hard with the police to move that forward. So we're real excited about those projects that'll become online as well. And then last is our fire prevention services under Deputy Chief Harold Thompson with thirty-three years of service. And then the trifecta that we have there is our three work sections is code compliance, fire investigations, and public safety education, or what we also refer to as community risk reduction. And this is in a very important work section where our goal in that area is the proactive side to try to reduce the opportunity for us to go out the door every day. So this is something we're very proud of, and they work very hard in that area. And you can see there's forty-four positions there with six point six million dollars in the budget. And their highlight is a community risk reduction. We've been working on this for several years. We're really excited to see this come to fruition. We're working with a third-party contractor, a subject matter expert in that area that will, should be bringing this before you, before the end of this fiscal year to award a third-party vendor in that. And it should take about six months to complete that risk assessment, where they'll look at everything within our city and determine what type of risk, and that way we can start addressing those specifically. So we're really excited about that coming forward. And just in conclusion, there are several goals and objectives higher level that we want to accomplish this year, and some of these I wanted to bring forward to you. We want to look and continue our collaborative efforts with IMSA and the Office of the Medical Director to provide long-term sustainability for our EMS system in the city. That's something we're working on continuously. We want to build upon our incident management capabilities by providing continued education and advanced training for our command-level officers. We want to improve our wildland urban interface, community risk reduction, fuel reduction efforts, and incident response to these type of incidents. And we want to continue migration of incident data and departmental data from multiple platforms to a central environment to enhance operations and improve data analysis. So these are some of our major goals that we'd like to accomplish this year, this upcoming fiscal year. And at this time, I would like to thank you all for your continued support of public safety, our residents for what they do in stepping up and supporting public safety every year, and for our firefighters for the incredible work that they do serving the community every day. And at this time, I'd open up to any questions.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate the presentation. Appreciate the work that you and your leadership team do to lead in the community. I really do. Are there any questions from the council?
You mentioned the dorm renovations and the expansion of the sleeping quarters. Is, how many stations is that occurring at? When did it start and when will it finish?
Yes, sir. Currently, so we have nine stations currently that actually, as we've built new stations that actually have individualized sleeping areas. We have Fire Station One that we just completed, and we have thirteen that are what we call two-company houses that have more than one apparatus that we're now in the process of starting that renovation. We have three that we're working on currently. Our goal would be within the next two years, especially this renovation team coming online, that we should be able to try to accomplish that. It's, sometimes it comes down to the supply chain and that type of area where we can accomplish those tasks. But that's, I'm sure my deputy that's over that back here, if I say two years, is probably, he may have a scowl on his face, but that's something we'd like to see in about two years that we were able to accomplish those two-company houses where we can really make some change in those areas.
I'm sure it makes a lot of people happy. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I have some questions about, I think, and this applies, it sounds like both now to the police department and fire department with this addition of a licensed professional counselor to staff. You know, because I think about, well, one, you know, I think there's like a level of the public also needing to understand that, like, city employees have great health benefits. Our health insurance is like wildly good, especially as it relates to the parity for mental health care. And so I'm curious, because, you know, when I hear one LPC for essentially a thousand staff, you know, that's not a manageable caseload for one person to truly be seeing all those folks. So it sounds to me like the intention of it more is to provide maybe that support for acute incidents. But I guess I'm just curious about, you know, I think of a friend of mine who responded to the Mura bombing in ninety-five and, you know, taking almost twenty years to access any kind of support or help or recognize, you know, the trauma that he was carrying and needed some support with. And I'm just curious about how this person or kind of how the department overall can maybe be helping, or if you have any strategies or have had discussions about how you help your staff increase their utilization of the services that are currently available to them through things like their health insurance. And, you know, I applaud the peer support piece because I think that's obviously a huge part, is seeing other folks that you identify with saying, I struggle with the same things. But I'm just kind of curious what those conversations have been, because it's one of those things for me is like we can offer, you know, the services all day, but until we change the culture of the stigma that just is pervasive in our culture of accessing those support services, just kind of what y'all's conversation has been at the leadership level on that.
Yes, ma'am. Great question, and it is challenging because you have a lot of people that don't want to come forward. But we've really focused in that area. We developed what we call our peer support team, so that's their peers that are trained in that, where they can reach out and they feel like someone can relate to them. We also have an app that we push out to all of our firefighters, their families, retirees. It's a mental wellness app that really talks about services they have available to them, people they can reach out to, their peer support, who they are. We also focus from the very beginning. So when we meet with our recruits, we do, like this recruit class we have currently, we do four family nights, and we invite the family, we bring them in, and we have our peer support personnel there. And we talk about the stressors that they're going to face and some of those challenges. We focus in a lot of different areas. We actually talk about financial stability because those can become challenging and put stress on people. So we focus four nights, and we bring in, we also have a family support team, so it's not just about our firefighters. We have some of our significant others that actually are a part of that, where they actually are there for our family members, because we recognize the stress that our firefighters go through may bring that home that creates stress within the family environment. So we're really doing that. We also have great leadership. A lot of our firefighters that have had these challenging situations are open about that. They'll talk about, you know, going and seeing a counselor or some of the challenges they've had. So we really are trying to change that environment so where it's more open. It's still challenging. And we also, as you said, this person will not be able to see a thousand plus their family members and everything else. But our goal is, as you said, the acute, those ones that we know, we need definitive help right now to save this person's life or to make sure that they're balanced. So that's what we're really focused on. But we also want to look at that as to build resiliency, because we think sometimes just because who we are, we're resilient people, and we really want to build positive resiliency in that. So that'd be some of the things that we'll look at is how does this person help us to do that within our organization to help us? We all know that we have, unfortunately, what we respond to is post-traumatic stress. How do we keep that from becoming a disorder? And that's some of the goals that we'll focus. So it's going to be a learning experience for us, but we're really excited for that challenge and the opportunity to do that.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
You made a comment that we're going to be doing like heavy metal testing every three years, abdominal four and chest X-rays on five. Why that year range? Why not like every two years?
A lot of it came down to funding. But we also looked at best practices when we talked with some of the medical staff. I mean, obviously, if you could do it every year, that would be something beneficial. But we looked at it, if you balance and separate that out, NFPA recommends five years for chest X-ray. So that's where we fell on that one. The abdominal ultrasound was something we looked at is if you separate that, it's not going, you know, so you're at least every couple of years, you're going to have more evasive testing. And that was part of that we looked at, of being able to do that in an appropriate manner that we felt was being able to test our firefighters to make sure, or evaluate our firefighters to make sure that they're, you know, checked up on and taken care of. And some of it also, we had to lay in the budget of how we could do that, and what we felt was the most cost-effective way to do it.
So we need to help increase that if we need to get it every other year?
It would be something, yes, we'll look at. If we can get this in place, we'll look at that. There's also some challenges for us of we send them on duty, of logistics of that. So that was some of it we also played into that process as well as the logistic side of it. It's not like we didn't feel they were as important enough to do that when we looked at best practices and talked to people. The five years was recommended for NFPA, that the abdominal ultrasounds and the heavy metal screening is something that we're looking at. And we could increase that as we work with our occupational clinic.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't coming against you on that.
No, 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 sir.
I'm glad we're doing that.
Totally understand.
I'm excited about that side of it. I just, I agree. I think we should be doing it a lot more often.
Yes, sir.
And keeping the wellness.
Yes, sir. I agree, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring that forward, to even have the opportunity to look at that. There's a lot of departments that don't even do annual physicals. So the support that we have to be able to do them every year and then to eventually increase that is appreciated very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, thank you for all you do, the whole department. Appreciate you. A couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
And you may not know the answers to these, and it's fine if you just want to give them to me later. But do we have any idea, I think it's thirteens, is that two forty in South Air Depot?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea when that one's going to be remodeled?
It's on the bond, two thousand and seventeen bond, and we're actually having discussions right now on the actual location. Is that the appropriate location? And we're actually have went out for a fire station location and deployment study. It was part of that community risk assessment I talked about earlier. It's all kind of combined together, and that's one of the areas we're going to look at. Does that fire station need to sit exactly on that location or in that general vicinity, you know, as we try to purchase land? It is coming up on the, on the capital improvement projects under our bond in two thousand and twenty-five. So we'll be working on that and trying to get everything laid out in preparation to rebuild the fire station. It will become, right now, currently, you have at that location Engine Thirteen, Brush Pumper Thirteen. When we rebuild that, that will be a chief station. So we'll move the chief that's over in Capitol Hill area out to that location. And then we're also moving our ladder off of sixty-six and Shields area to that location. And the reason we're doing that, in the long-term project on I-35 right there, they're going to shut down the on and off ramp to Sixty-Sixth Street.
Right.
So we're moving that out there. So that station will be a larger station with an engine, a ladder, brush pumper, and a battalion chief.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a timeline on the new training center?
We're working very diligently with the architect and trying to get things, you know, in tune with the budget, making sure we get everything pared down. We're pretty close in that area.
If I recall correctly, too, we sold the bonds on that already, haven't we?
Yes.
So everything's in place to do that.
Yes, sir.
It's just a matter of getting the design and everything ready to go.
Yeah.
We've got the location, we've got the site and all. But we'll get you a timeline on when we think that'll be constructed.
Yes, sir.
Great. I'm excited for it, so.
Yes, sir.
Thanks again, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Chief, I was looking at the station map earlier, and I know we're two, expanded west. Is Station Thirty, is that Expressway and Meridian?
Yes, sir. It sits right on the lake, right there, right on the, on the golf course, right above Northwest Expressway, right there.
Would it be possible? I'd like to go there. I know I've gone with you to the one on Twenty-third.
Yes, sir.
But that was in the before times, before the pandemic, and I'd like to meet these new folk, so.
Yes, sir.
If safety, is that a, I don't know, what's called?
No, that's fine, absolutely. It's, is that, does that station have one of the long ladders on it?
It has, it does have a large ladder there, but we moved a bucket over there, so it has now, has one of our platforms there.
So if you wanted to, you could even climb the ladder.
You can climb the ladder. Nice one about this one, it's a platform.
I've turned down that opportunity, but you could do it if you'd like to.
Is there a pole?
No, sir. The only station that has a pole was Fire Station One. But it does, it's a platform, so you don't have to climb it. You can actually, we can.
With you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, don't tempt me with the good timing. I'll climb your ladder. I'll do that. I climbed to the top of that little First National Building, so this is, we can do that. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just have one quick comment. I just want to say first, thank you for the presentation, but also, I want to commend you all for the recruitment efforts that you are striving to do. And that was well seen in the graduation that you had that I attended for that diversity aspect.